Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, welcome everybody to the April 27th City Council Work Session. Welcome to everyone here and at home, and the item of the day is a City Hall update. City Manager?
Thank you Mayor, and I'll turn over to Kristi and her team to walk through a presentation, then of course we'll be here for questions and answers.
Good afternoon. Today, we'd like to cover the information that we sent both last week and earlier this week in your packets, go through some update for information that you asked for about the design, a little bit of additional information on the cost and the proposed funding, but we want to reserve most of the time for your discussion and questions and so on. The information in the packet included some background on the minority and women-owned business recruitment, some detail about the risk fund, the source for potential seismic funding, how the history element is being worked on, still a work in progress, but we're preserving space for that in the design as we move forward. Talked just briefly about some of the security features. We have reviewed the design with the police department, reactive shooter scenarios, added some exits, we have access controls that will protect entrances and exits, and so we've done several iterations of the review and really feel like we have the security dialed in really well. We can provide more information to any councilors that would like it offline, as well as some information about how City Hall might be used in the aftermath of a disaster if we have the higher seismic rating. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to the design team to talk more about some of the information that you asked for about the design.
Yeah. Thanks Mike. Last, maybe I'll use this so we don't have an echo. You saw these project objectives last time, and we want to follow up on your request for more information on energy performance, the seismic standard, and civic identity. So we'll just take you into some of the work we've been doing on these fronts. You remember this slide? How far are we coming in terms of energy performance when you compare it to the old City Hall and what a standard office building would be? And we set that objective of a EUI of 30 as a goal, and we'll show you the kind of work that we do to get there, and we're doing well on that front. And of course, that sets us up for the path, a path to net zero on the building. This is an image from what we call the building information model. As the design progresses, we have more and more detail that's integrated into the design, and that's important from an architectural point of view, but it's also important in terms of integrating the systems of the building and measuring the energy performance. So the way this works is that we take recommendations from engineers, we integrate it into the design, we create this model, and it goes through iterative cycles of analysis as we refine what we're doing and refine the design. And the key is that these are integrated and interdependent design strategies, not just one plug-in thing. And we'll show you some of the steps that we've taken, but it's architecturally integrated, it's integrated from a building systems point of view. This is an energy model from the engineers, and it continually gets updated as they analyze and then tell us where we need to tweak something. The colors are not the color of the building, these represent the properties of the materials and the skin. Energy models don't look like the building, but they approximate it, and they give us really, give the engineers really good feedback. And this is how they analyze how we're doing with respect to the size of the windows, the orientation of the glass, the shading, where we've got heat gain and we've got heat loss, and we need to adjust things to make the building perform. And the idea is to drive down the loads, don't waste energy, and that reduces the size of your equipment and all the systems of the building. The diagram on the right, which is, you know, I don't think we need to dive into detail, but that actually measures the performance of the building every hour of the day, every day of the year, and can tell you the energy use during those times. And they use this in the model to analyze, well, how are we doing? And you can see their peaks and valleys, and we can take that information and adjust the design to respond and make it even more efficient.
And then all of that data can be dissected in any number of ways, and what you're seeing here is a pie chart that illustrates the way that energy is used in the building, and this is all in your packet, maybe a little bit more legible. But you can see for each building system, whether that's space heating, or cooling, or lighting, or plug loads, which is a term that we use for all the things that you would plug in, your computers, your lights, things like desk lights, things like that. You can see in a typical office building, all of that results in an EUI measure of 75. And when we talk about EUI of 30, what you're seeing here in the pie chart on the right represents a 60% savings in energy that's not used from the typical office building. And we can get into details if you'd like, but just a way of looking at a couple of things. You can see lighting, by being more responsible about the lighting that we're using and taking advantage of daylighting, we're able to drive that down from 12 for that yellow component down to five. The most dramatic reduction you can see is the space heating because of some of the systems that we're using, the ground source heat pump system and other mechanical measures, as well as taking advantage of some of the natural ventilation we'll describe in a little bit. You can see that that reduction is very significant from really the whole bottom third of the pie on the left to only three EUI on the right. So just a couple of examples of how some of these integrated choices that when we look at building systems, some of the impacts that they can have on the systems that really contribute to this EUI metric. And this is really another way of looking at that. So all of the colors that were in the pie chart are in the bar, the smaller bars to the right, representing the various building components. And if we start at the left with the old City Hall, which really had a lot of energy performance challenges and was really operating at 130, which is significantly above what we would, anybody would target today. But if we start looking at making incremental steps, and we've identified some of them here, layering on efficient lighting choices, accommodating daylighting, improved glazing performance on down the line, those are the measures that we're really using to move from a lead baseline building or even a typical office building down to this target of EUI 30. And one of the points here is that a lot of these things are interrelated. In other words, you can't remove one and not impact the other. So when you take all of these together, that's what's really allowing us to move to that pretty aggressive target of EUI 30.
When you, if you look at the right side of the chart, you know, these things kind of come in in order, and this chart actually came from our engineers when we were initially looking at, okay, what do we need to do? And you see that at the end of this is the heat pump and the ground source system. You wouldn't start with that as a strategy because you would need too many wells, it would be very expensive. So you take measures to reduce the, what we call the loads, the use of energy, to reduce, so that it's possible to have a very efficient system like that. And you can see at the very end how it gets us to our goal and possibly even better. So we wanted to show you a couple ways, can't go in, there are many ways that we're accomplishing these. Again, it's integrated into the whole design of the building, but there are a couple ways you can understand, we want to illustrate how this happens, what are the moves that we make in the design that can, for example, save that much heating energy. This is an aerial view, looking from the southwest where you can see the double skin in yellow facing the public plaza. And then, we haven't talked much before about the other three sides of the building and how are they made, and what are the materials in the windows and so on. And we want to show you that wall, what we call a wall section, or the cross-section of that wall, because it's a very simple approach to saving a lot of energy, and it just makes a lot of sense. And then we'll come back to the double skin. And you can see at the diagram on the right that most of the building, the west, east, and north sides are the more solid portions, and then we have more glazing to the south. So go through this quickly, it's a little bit geeky, but just to help you understand how do you save that much heating energy? If you look at a section through a standard wall, on the left is the exterior, we call it cladding, it's the finish that you would see, and then there's insulation, and then there's a stud wall. And one of the first things you want to take care of is rain. We know in our climate, you know, got to take care of moisture, and we don't want to have moisture problems in a building that's projected for 50 to 100 years. So we take care of that with what we call a rain screen and durable exterior materials. And then you know a drafty building is hard to heat no matter what you do. So take care of the wind and that, and the air blowing through the building. And so we have what's called an air barrier, and it's a continuous air barrier, and that really has a big impact on the performance of the building. Obviously, if you go out in the cold, you wear a coat, and the more continuous that coat can be, the blanket, the better off you're going to be. So we have continuous exterior insulation that really helps reduce heat loss. And then finally, what that allows us to do is to have, we insulate the stud wall, as if, you know, in your own home, you probably know there's insulation in the studs. We have insulation in our studs, but they're inside of all these barriers so that when you put electrical outlets, you run services through that. It is decoupled from the control of heat loss. So it really gives you flexibility, and it prevents air movement through the building and so on. And there are more details to this, but that kind of wall is really the kind of wall you want to build in a building that's meant to be around for a long time. And we're not talking about complication, it's just, it's a simple approach to reordering the materials to really get the best performance. And that's how we get such a reduction in the heating.
And then the south facade, or the south elevation of the building is the double skin facade, and this is another example of a lot of individual systems and choices coming together in a very integrated fashion. So the assembly there is a wall system, much like John described, at the inner plane of the building, and then separation and airspace between that plane and the glazing, which represents the two elements of the double skin. And you can begin to see here some of the key things that that system allows us to achieve in the building. One, it allows us to reuse some of the salvaged cedar that's part of the building identity on the south facade, the very visible public facade, without having that cedar be exposed to the elements. So that double skin provides protection for what becomes a very iconic element in the building. The double skin also allows, and this is represented by the arrow that's moving up through, air to be introduced at the bottom side of that through a perforated grate. That space actually acts as a plenum or thermal chimney, so air comes through. As that air is heated up by, you know, the sun coming through that wall, there are louvers at the top that can be opened to pull that air through. So rather than a typical building where a lot of that heat gains, or heat gain enters the building through the facade, we're able to remove a lot of that heat before it actually enters the building. So John talked about reducing the load, that's one strategy that reduces the cooling load in the building by taking that hot air out before you have to temper it inside. That space also gives us the ability to integrate some automatic shades that are at the upper level of the main public rooms fronting the plaza, and using some very high-performance triple glazing at that lower level provides great acoustical qualities in those rooms, as well as increased thermal performance, again, you know, contributing to the reduction of load and the minimizing of the systems required for heating and cooling. And one of the things about thinking about all of these elements in an integrated manner is, all of this contributes, we believe, to the aesthetic of the building. The current design south elevation you see here, the double skin, you're seeing the wood expressed, the salvaged wood, the very regular ordering of the bays, not unlike classic Greek temples that have a very strong order. It's a very, I guess, historically relevant way of describing a civic building, obviously interpreted in a little bit different manner here. But the idea of transparency at the ground plane is something that we've talked about throughout this whole project, and putting those systems and the double skin on display so that the people in the community can begin to understand some of the qualities that are contributing to this building being a sustainable model in the community.
So we wanted to describe a little more about the seismic standard. We have been designing two, and we touched on this last time, the 1.5, that means a stronger, stronger building, more resilient in an earthquake. And one of the key takeaways is that it's designed to be operational in a Cascadia, following a Cascadia earthquake. This, of course, affects the primary structure, the size of the beams and columns, and I'll talk about the bracing in a second, but it also is integrated, brings in all the other systems, the mechanical, electrical plumbing, and it's not just the primary structure. It really strengthens the capacity of all those other systems, and we'll see why that's important. It's a step above minimum code for an assembly occupancy, and is consistent with many initiatives at the city, the state level. And we're hearing more and more, engineer, as John McDonald is providing us with more information on how on many fronts jurisdictions are looking at this as wise planning. What does this mean for what we're doing? Again, column and beams are stronger, we configured the building, you have to look at the layout of the structure so that it's strong. But when we look at, the real key to the performance of the primary structure are what are called the braced frames in a steel building. On the right in your packet, you got some information on the Santa Clarita City Hall, and how they, after an event, it was an important building for the community, but they couldn't use it, ended up retrofitting it with what are called concentrically braced frames. And John helped us understand the difference between that and what we're proposing, which are, we're designing what are called buckling restrained braces. And he says, you know, the ones on the right, they're good for retrofit, but what we can propose, what we're doing is better. They actually perform better, he says they're smoother, they reduce the drift. Counselor Clark, you were asking about high rises and how they flex, and we've found out more about this, the design, in order to achieve these standards absorbs more energy and actually reduces the loads on the building. So, good question, and this is how we're doing it with these braces, they need to be designed into the whole system. The secondary systems, the plumbing, the electrical, especially the sprinkler pipes, John gave us an example of a hospital in Sepulveda which went nicely through a large earthquake, sprinklers broke, caused millions and millions of dollars of damage. So it's not just the frame, it's the secondary systems that you need for operation, but also to protect the asset.
So, looking both at the south in a minute, at the north, I mean, this is a building that, again, through all of these integrative elements, we believe is one that really has a very strong public identity, a civic identity, the expression, the strong expression on the south plaza, ideas of transparency, linking the physical transparency to symbolic transparency and governmental transparency, and accessibility, really providing those public rooms a common ground plane with the plaza, it's a building that's open to everyone. And when we look around at the north side, and again, the images in your packet probably show a little better, but we've talked a lot about the idea of that main entry axis coming through from the south to the north. It's a building that really does have two front doors from the south plaza, and then the vehicular parking is to the north, so that we know will be a main entry. But this also begins to show the materials on the north, the east, and the west elevations. These are lightweight yet durable and cost-effective materials for the three main sides of the building, and then obviously treating the south in quite a different way. Council has also asked throughout the process of, you know, what makes this building unique to Eugene? And we believe that that idea of tying to the unique civic identity of this place is really key. And when we look at some of the main areas that give Eugene some of that identity, obviously a strong connection to the natural environment, the cultural history of Eugene, the heritage, both from the Kalapuia and also from a lot of the historic industrial areas, and using the wood that was on the old City Hall, salvaging that and reusing that in a way that begins to tell that story and bring that history forward.
We have wanted to show you a few, I know we've seen, gotten a glimpse of the interior, and these are a few updates of, this is a view from the council dais looking west, and you can see the view of the council chamber and then out into the plaza, and that idea that we've talked about, of a room that is of civic scale, but also appropriately scaled for the activities of council. And so that connection between inside and outside visually, and from one room to another, we think is just right for capturing the sense of Eugene's civic heart. And then you can see the cedar as a canopy linking the entry and the work session room, and then elements of the cedar used in the portal entering from the lobby into the council chamber.
So I think the overall character of this room is one that does honor and respect and carry forward that history and the heritage through the use of the materials, but it's also a room that is quite grand on a civic scale, it has that civic importance that we believe is very important for City Hall. It's also a room that, or a series of rooms that are very light and airy in character, they're naturally lit, and we believe, and obviously have the acoustic and AV qualities that are needed in today's city halls. But it's a building that's inviting and open, and again, very transparent in the sense of conveying that fundamental quality of government.
And then a view at the room on the, at the west end of the series, this is the work session room where we'll be meeting like this. You can see the connection again to natural light and to the plaza, good configuration, well-functioning walls that you can use, good lighting, a sense of purpose and appropriate scale for civic activity. And, you know, our charge has been to take council-established values and bring back a design and what could be a building that meets those values, and we are confident that this building can do that. Thank you. And we'll turn it back to Mike.
So this slide is a summary of the more detailed cost summary that you have in your packet that lists the project elements, the current design cost estimate, the cost escalation over the original adopted budget and potential funding sources to bridge that gap. A couple things that I just want to highlight here, the first two items, the related project costs and demolition and site prep, are costs that are already spent or committed, that whatever course we take from this point, those costs are invested and won't go down, and any change would just cause those costs to go up. The building construction costs, the various elements, the base building costs that we do think includes enough for council offices, particularly at the higher end of that range. The seismic improvements, the energy efficiency improvements, and the civic identity and presence that John and Scott have talked about, these show the approximate cost of those features. It's a little hard to tease out because of the integrated design and that we're solving multiple problems simultaneously, but I think this is a reasonable way of looking at it. And I think, again, the important thing to note here is that those are, if we pull those items out, we don't get all that money back. Because of the integrated design process, these elements are knit together into the building, and so at best, we might, if we pulled all of the additional features out of the building, we might save a million dollars at the most. And then the total project cost at the bottom is based on maintaining our pretty aggressive schedule that we're currently operating under to get this, get this out to bid as soon as possible, get it out in as favorable a bid environment as possible, because as we've talked about previously, time is money and the construction industry is picking up these days. We showed you some cost comps the last time we were here, and wanted to show one that's really relevant to our discussion, the Olympia City Hall was completed about five years ago. This cost information is pulled right off the Hoffman Construction website, it's a 60,000 square foot building, it achieved LEED Gold certification, it has a police element in it, so it's designed to the higher seismic level, and the total construction cost for that building was 38.7 million, which translates to $645 a square foot, and $2,011 escalation per five years since then would push that cost well over $700 a square foot. Of course, every building has its own unique circumstances that affect the costs, both up and down, but I think it serves as a really good model in our region to go along with the ones that we showed you previously, and the comparison to our building on the right And then going to the potential funding sources, just to present a little bit more detail, these are similar to what we showed you previously. In the previous slide, or the two slides ago with the cost summary, we associated funding sources with specific items on the project budget, and this slide sets out the potential range of funding needed or potentially available from each of those sources to pay for a $6 to $7 million budget increase. The capital budget allocations are the largest source here, we could use both one-time and ongoing allocations over a period of years to fund 3.3 to 3.8 million dollars of the budget increase. As a result, other capital projects for public buildings may take longer to fund. However, we do think this is an appropriate backstop because, particularly because of the decision to build new, because by demolishing the old City Hall, we removed over $33 million in deferred maintenance, which is by far the largest aspect of deferred maintenance in our building portfolio. The risk fund has dollars that decided to cover the approximately $1 million for the seismic upgrade. And again, there's more information about this funding source in the agenda item summary from last week. Fundraising could be used to pay for key project attractions such as the water feature and the history element. Public works funds could be used to pay for elements of the project such as right-of-way and sidewalk improvements, street tree plantings, and potentially site improvements as well if the plaza is designated a park. Parking fees will be charged for the use of a lot on the north side of the site, and the bulk of those fees would be needed to maintain the lot, but the remainder could be used to back borrowing to pay for the cost of the lot. And then from time to time, other one-time sources become available. If that occurs, these sources go off to one or more of the items identified on this list. Potentials include marginal beginning working capital, lawsuit settlements, grants, other tax credits, and so on. We've not listed any EWE or Oregon Department of Energy incentives in this list yet, because those aren't for sure. We're pursuing those, and that could add up to some significant numbers, but we would use those one-time sources to offset some of these others. Currently expect to be able to cover the cost of moving and furnishing the city manager's office functions from budgetary savings in the central services department from this year, and that's what's shown in this chart. I'm not coming through too well, so, well, I'm done anyway, so. Wanted to turn it over for our discussion, and I'm sure you have a lot of questions and a lot you'd like to discuss, but we particularly want to get answers to the four items that were in the agenda item summary. These are the things that will help us move forward with the project. Thank you.
So just for the public, I see, they'll be able to see it here, but I just want to speak to that and say the questions you're asking council to respond to right now, among others that they may want to respond to, is that should the new City Hall be a others that they may want to respond to, is that should the new City Hall be a LEED Gold certified building? Should the new City Hall have a seismic rating of 1.5? Should the new City Hall include dedicated offices in the current phase of the project? Should the new City Hall have the level of civic quality included in the presented design? And what do you mean by civic quality?
The things that were listed in the packet, specifically the Western Red Cedar reuse, the double-skin curtain wall, that also helps contribute to the energy efficiency goals, cladding materials and the canopy and columns that make up part of the south facade.
Thank you. Okay, I have in the queue right now George Brown and Betty and Alan. Anybody else on the queue now? Okay, Claire, anybody else, Mike? Okay, so George, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm asking these questions about the finances. We didn't really receive a lot of information, and we haven't throughout this whole process. We haven't received any detailed information. So I'm doing this because we councilors know that we have the ultimate fiscal responsibility for this project. We're going to either have to approve or disapprove, or approve of or disapprove of the $7 million cost overrun or elements thereof. It's very important, and so we need to ask a lot more questions so we can make a good decision. The first question is, it's my understanding that the city hired Mackenzie Construction as the construction manager, general contractor.
Mackenzie Commercial Contractors, yes.
Yeah, at the same time that the architects were hired, or?
Shortly thereafter, yes.
Okay. In their contract, are they responsible for estimating costs for every schematic design iteration?
They participated in that. The early designs were estimated by the design team and then checked by the CMGC, by Mackenzie Commercial. And then as we move forward, more responsibility then shifts it over to CMGC with the, Mackenzie Commercial, with the design team cost estimator providing checks, you know, backup to those estimates, yes.
Okay, yeah, because that, I mean, their main responsibility is to provide oversight and see if the project's still on budget, is the way I understand it. Is that a fair description of one of their duties?
That's, I mean, it's ultimately our responsibility, you know, the city's responsibility as the owner, that they were hired to advise throughout the design process on budget issues, constructability issues, and all those sorts of things, yes.
Can you tell me how many schematic design iterations there have been? Where the budget, where that were checked for budgetary information, checked against that, increased in the budget?
Do you recall? Yeah. Options or iterations? Yeah, that we costed, we did. Well, as with all of this, a lot of it is iterative. We did specific design, cost estimates at twice?
In schematic design, twice.
50% schematic and 100% schematic, twice, yes.
Okay, and did you present this information to council?
No, I don't believe so. We did not have the, at the time of the July update last year, we did not yet have the 100% schematic design back from the cost estimator and the contractor.
But that could have been provided after July, prior to this date.
Yes, and as I mentioned before, one of the things that we could have done differently, I could have done differently, provided those ongoing updates, and so you're correct. If that information was available at the time, that could have been provided to council, and it was not.
Yeah, well, I hope everyone heard that. It should have been provided. All right, so, next question is moot. Why didn't council get those updates? Okay, this is one for the project manager. When were you first aware that the project was seriously over budget?
We have done quite a bit of work all along the way and had indications during schematic design that we had budget challenges, and so that was part of our effort as we moved forward through the rest of schematic design and then into design development, was to attack those budget issues and use the integrated design process to try to refine this as much as possible.
What I'll add, and I think I did mention this before to council, is that the initial design that came back that was within the then-budget, I didn't believe it met the values that the council had identified for the project, so I had asked them at that time to go back and redesign the building based on the values, and knowing that in order to do that, it would cost more money to design to the values. And then the idea was, is when they had that, we'd bring that back to council, is what we are doing now. So that would have been...
When was this decision made, approximately?
Twelve months ago, plus or minus.
Would have been nice to see that information 12 months ago.
Yes, and again, what I'll say is, I could have provided additional information through the continuation of the project, and I didn't, and that's a piece that going forward, we can do differently.
Okay, well, this is what we, see, we were aware of this on April 11th, that there was a $7 million cost overrun here. We should have been informed much earlier than that. And this is the information we receive. 10 lines of financial information. I had to ask for this. This was not in today's material. Nobody asked, this is, we need more information than this, but I mean, you know, this is, people are around, I'm canvassing for a political candidate, and I'm hearing every single day, and I don't bring it up. I'm hearing every day from people around town, they're shocked, they're angry, they're upset. What? How did this happen? And that's what my questions are aimed at determining. I will need another round, Mayor.
I've got you, Don, for another round. Betty, you're next.
Thank you. I'll probably want a second round, too, but those were good questions that George asked. I also, and I don't see as much of the public as George does, I'm sure, because of his business, but people ask me, how could this happen? Why weren't you watching? How did, why did the costs go up so much? And several people have asked me, why don't you just let Whole Foods build it? And that is in relation to how long it's taking, and I think that the length of time is, has something to do with, according to what you've said, with the rise in the cost. First value was on that list was stewardship, and of course, if we were good stewards, we would have saved the old building, but I know it's too late for that, and there's no secret that I regret losing the building, which I think would have embodied stewardship as well as transparency. Our old council chamber was certainly transparent and open to the public and very democratic. And it's, I can't tell whether the new one will be similar, it's not similar. And use of the cedar reminds me of something I said early in the process. You'll probably put a picture of the old City Hall in the new one and say that's in memory of it, and this reminds me of what happens so often, that something is destroyed and you use a picture of it. Like, I know a shopping mall that's called The White Oaks because there used to be white oaks there. I think, to me, it seems that this has been mismanaged all the way along. I know that we made a motion to, at one point, to save as much as possible of the old City Hall, to save the parking, to save the council chamber, and the firm that was hired was the one that wanted demolition, so that sort of settled that. We did pass the, repassed the motion, but it was gradually ignored. And the delay, I don't, this, I think George has pointed out how we didn't know what was happening during the long delay, but if the delay is the reason for the rise in the costs, then that's a big part of not managing the project correctly, I think. I wonder if how many, you're talking about saving, I'll get to those questions in a minute. I better get to them now. Should the new City Hall be a LEED Gold if possible? Should it have seismic rating 1.5? I don't think it's necessary, and people I consider experts don't think it's necessary. Should it include dedicated offices? It should, and we were told in the beginning that was a part of it. Should it have the level of civic quality? Well, I don't see that, I don't see a lot of civic, sure it should have civic quality.
Next round, Betty?
Yes, please.
Alan.
Yeah, I guess I'd point out that mostly additional costs are really improvements or enhancements to the original design that someone has been calling for for a long time, so, and I'll point out that no decisions have been made yet on those things, so they can be included or not. That's what we're doing now, that's what we're here for, and whether or not we should spend the extra dollars on these enhancements and improvements. As far as the seismic, recently we read the New Yorker article by Catherine Schultz entitled "The Really Big One," and the odds of a big earthquake in the next 50 years are 1 in 3. A really big earthquake are 1 in 10. So, and the really big one, last one, was in 1700, and averages every 243 years, and we're 316 years into that. So the likelihood of a major earthquake happening during this building's lifetime are really quite good, unfortunately. And the main reason for investing the risk fund dollars into this is that it's a really good business decision. For, many people don't realize it, that we're self-insured, meaning that we pay for the damage of the rebuilding or reconstruction of the City Hall, and have an insurance policy on our assets, it'd be too expensive. So it makes sense to spend a million dollars now rather than almost assuredly spending maybe as much as $30 million later. I don't want people to be saying, wow, we could have spent 5% more back then instead of the whole thing again today, and say, what were they thinking? To be clear, this is an upgrade from the standard building, from an assembly building, but I think it's worth the investment to make in an operable building after a big earthquake. It doesn't make sense to me when people say that since many buildings are going to fall down, that we should let this one fall down, too, especially when we can afford to make it and we have the money, make sure it doesn't happen and we have the money in the risk fund. Also doesn't make sense to me that since other public buildings and schools are unprepared and not built to the right standard, that we should then therefore follow their lead. That doesn't make sense to me either. The answer really is that we make all those buildings and schools up to this higher standard, and that's going to cost us. We're way underprepared in this state for this earthquake, and that's something that George has been talking about for years and years, actually. The other reason to make this investment in the seismic upgrades is to ensure we have a building from which we can manage the aftermath and the recovery. It's not so much right after the earthquake, you know, we're not going to be relevant right after the earthquake, but it's the months and maybe years after, in the recovery and the aftermath, that it'll be important. We should learn from other communities that have been through this, and they wish they had done what we're thinking of doing, and others have already done it in incorporating the standard, higher standard of seismic resiliency into their buildings. So it's, you know, especially after FEMA leaves, this is going to be really, really important to have an operable City Hall, and I think it'll be an asset to our spirit and also our operability as a city.
Claire?
Thank you. I've got a few questions, and then I'll probably need another round for comments. So I had asked about other buildings in the area that were built to the 1.5 seismic standard, and you guys gave us information about city-owned buildings, but I didn't know if we know whether the new federal courthouse or the old federal building or any other buildings, private or public, have been built to this 1.5 standard. I don't know if you have that information or could bring it back to us.
Yeah, we have to bring it back. Schools and hospitals, of course, built, you know, since this code has been in place, are built to that higher standards, and I know the 4J School District has retrofitted a lot of their schools and other public agencies, but I couldn't tell you, I don't really know about buildings where that would be an upgrade above code, so I'd have to look into that.
So can you clarify the standard for like the new school buildings that 4J and Bethel, Bethel just completed theirs and 4J's in the process? Are those being built to be usable after an earthquake or just to make sure folks can survive through an earthquake in them?
I believe those are required by code to be the higher standard, aren't they?
I'd have to, we just completed the design, you know, starting on Jefferson, but it's not, I need, we need to check that.
Yeah, I would like to know that because I think it's relevant. This is a totally small, silly question, but I was just curious where the audiovisual control room will be located for the webcast and cable access broadcasting in this new design.
Well, the cable controls will still be in here, like it was done for the old City Hall and operated remotely. The equipment is, we've got room in our telco room, basically, on the ground floor, back behind the council chambers, next to the mechanical room, so it's, the equipment, and then there's equipment cabinets within the room itself for some of the, some of the audiovisual as well.
Okay. And then I wonder if you could speak to what were some of the driving forces that contributed to the increased cost in the demolition and site prep, and what could have been done to better anticipate those increased costs?
Yeah, that's a good one. The budget for that was based on some older projects such as the AgriPac cannery and some other demolition projects. In recent years, the standards for demolition have increased quite a bit in terms of the care taken, and so we made the decision to, rather than just bring a wrecking ball and knock everything over, we made the decision to do it more carefully and methodically. We salvaged more materials. We made the decision to grind up everything on-site, which was basically a wash. It took more time to do that, but then we used it as fill on the site. We ended up putting more of that on the east half and less on the west half so that we could bring some engineered fill on the west half. But it was primarily taking the due diligence to do it carefully, to keep everything watered down. The council was in the middle of reviewing the latest best standards in demolition and building deconstruction, and we were trying really hard to respond to community and council expectations and do a really careful, safe job.
And then, you know, how will you account for possible inflation and costs going forward if we, you know, experience more delays in this project so that council can be kept up to date on those?
Well, it's built in in terms of, we have some contingencies in there, change order contingency particularly for construction, because there's always a few things that come up as you go through construction, so we've reserved 2% to 2.5% on that. And we won't, we won't know for sure the cost until we bid, so obviously part of the plan would be to come back with a completed funding plan that's in response to the actual bids in hand so that you have control over exactly how we do that.
Thank you. Yeah, so kind of mirroring what Councilor Zalink has said, you know, with the exception of the expenditures that were already made, any increased costs in this project are still theoretical and contingent on decisions that we make going forward. To say that there is a $7 million cost overrun is false. We haven't spent that money or even committed to doing so. A cost overrun happens after the fact, so we've had a cost overrun on the demolition and prep of $1 million, and, you know, that is concerning. But I also would point out that the council itself added to this delay in the increased cost because certain council members insisted that revisit decisions we'd already made, and thus delaying the demolition of the old building. So while we can critique the city manager for how things were handled, I think we bear equivalent amount of blame due to our own actions. In terms of the seismic upgrade, you know, if we are able to finance that through the risk fund, which would not impact our general fund or other areas of our city budget, I think it would be irresponsible for us to build a new City Hall without this upgrade because we would essentially be planning for the building to be unusable in the event of a major quake, which we have a 1 in 3 chance of having, apparently, thus losing a major investment of public funds that we've made. I also, and I will take a second round, Mayor.
Okay, and now...
Greg, do you want to be in the queue?
Mike, you're up.
Not a moment, Alan.
Thank you. I, like George, have had an opportunity recently to speak to a couple of folks and hear largely similar things, but I want to be just as clear as I can be. similar things, but I want to be just as clear as I can be. I believe the manager did exactly what this council asked him to do. I believe he did exactly what this body has asked. And I believe that these fine professionals at the other end of the table here have given us some good work. And I'm, I like it very much. I think it's great work. Based on the council direction you had, you've performed well. My problem is the decision-making process the council has gone through, and I still have a problem with it, with where we are today. And it's not that with our key, our very first value being stewardship. It's not that this design or this building isn't good stewardship, because it is. I think stewardship applies to all of us. It's this level of spending that is extravagant. The building isn't extravagant, but us deciding to spend this much money for this particular priority is extravagant. And I don't believe that the community is ready for us to continue down this road where we're planning to spend so much more on this than they would prefer to see us spend on other priorities of the city. And I believe that moving forward, well, let me just ask this question. Will anything that we vote on today authorize you to spend more money?
No more money than is already authorized. So, in other words, we cannot move forward and start constructing this building until we come back and get authorization for the budget from the council.
Okay. So, you're still operating under the design and knock-it-down budget that we did approve, right?
Right. So, the budget that you approved says we would have enough money to go through construction drawings, through bidding, bidding the project if that were the council's preference, but we'd have to come back at that point to get authorization to implement the contract.
We will still be spending, though, the money to do the design work that we've authorized?
Yes. So, if you authorize, we would spend the money to work through the documents to bidding, potentially have the bidders come back with the bids, and then back to the council for authorization to spend.
And then what we'll do at that point, which you estimate being when?
In June is what we would like, to have the bids back in June. That would be the, our best outcome.
So, council would in either late June or 1st of July then decide to give you spending authority?
Yes.
Okay. Since we have so much time, I would like to make a motion. I just, this is coming to me as I'm going here. I apologize for not giving advance notice.
Motion is out of order.
May I point a procedure, Mayor? Why is that?
I'd just like to wait for the whole conversation to happen.
I see. My understanding is that a councillor has an opportunity to make a motion at the table while they have the floor. Is that based on the kind of motion or is that based on the mayor's preference at any given time?
Go on, you want to tell?
So, as the presider, the presider can determine how the flow of the conversation's going to go.
Mm-hmm.
And what I think I understand the mayor saying is there's a conversation going on that a motion at this time would not be in order, and she can make that ruling.
Excellent. Okay, I thank you for that. When would be a time for us to make a motion that would be perhaps of an additional path, not changing anything we're doing, but of an additional idea?
After we go, everybody gets a chance to go around.
Okay, I'll do that then. Thank you, Mayor. Please put me in for the second round. Thank you.
Chris.
Thank you. Kind of, for me, the long and the short is it's related to an opportunity I had once to visit the Disney University. And they talked about satisfaction and disappointment, which is a kind of a formula where you take the experience you have, you subtract what you expected to happen, and then if that number's positive, you're satisfied. If that number's negative, you're disappointed. And I think in this case, our experience has been about a 7, a 6, for the reasons we've all pointed out. But our expectation was a 9 or a 10. And so, if you take that 7 and you subtract 10, you wind up with a negative 3. We're all disappointed. And so, the point is, how do we change that back to being satisfied? And so, I think what we need to do is adjust the experience, which we've already talked about doing, and I think there's been some good suggestions for how to do that, to be more thorough, to be more timely, and to be more complete, a lot around communication and a lot around us being more deliberate in what we do and you do. So, both sides, I think Claire was right on the point. There's been some stuff we needed to do on both sides, but to adjust this experience so it's working a lot more effectively and efficiently. But that's half the equation. I think what we also need to do is adjust our expectations around this project. I think for us to think we could get a great building for cheap, and I think it's, we were talking on the cheap, we really were, I think was creating an unrealistic expectation that we could get a great building for not much money. And I think when you set yourself up with an expectation like that, you're just setting yourself up for disappointment. And I think what we're coming back with now is kind of the information, well, you know what? In retrospect, this is more what reality is. So, we need to add more of that reality into the experience so it doesn't create an expectation problem later. No decisions have been made, so we do have still a lot of opportunity to adjust and bring those more into alignment. But I think we need to adjust both sides of that in order to make this, turn this back into a satisfactory experience. I think being able to answer these questions will help, will help a lot. I think we need to keep moving deliberately forward, but with a sense of realism and increase communication. I mean, that really is, I think, a major piece. We and the community need to know what's going on. If it's going to be disappointing or if it's going to be bad news, we actually need to know that more frequently than we do good news. And I think that's part of also adjusting that formula. And for me, this is critically important because it's not just us that are going to determine our satisfaction or disappointment in the project, but the whole community is. And so, it's really important that we maintain our expectations realistically, but also our experience to be very transparent, deliberate, thoughtful, and timely. And then I think we can get back on track with this.
Thank you, George.
Thank you. I don't think we're going to get to any type of decision-making at all today. I won't repeat a lot what's said. I'll just say Claire is absolutely right that part of the increase was our fault. We need to own up to that by revisiting some of the questions that were already answered and moved upon. I agree with Mike about the city staff and the design team doing a good job based on the direction they were given. And then I would prefer that before we go any farther, that we answer these four questions, either yes or no vote. We've all had time to discuss it more than once. I think we should just put it out there and vote on it without any discussion. We've already discussed it all. If not, you know, I don't think it would go with head nods or kind of, okay, well, we heard from different people. I think we absolutely need to vote on this. You know, Betty went through the list of questions real quick and gave her opinion. I'll do the same thing. Should the new city hall be a LEED gold certified building? Well, at this point, we pretty much have to because that's something that our policy has said that we would, we want to see as a community, as a city government, people do. So, if we're going to tell people in the community, this is how we like to see things built, we're pretty much going to have to build it that way. Should the new city hall have a seismic rating of 1.5? I had a discussion with John about this last week. You know, you can make a good argument on both sides. Alan makes some good points. That, if I was pushed for a vote, I would vote, but right now, I'm still kind of kicking around the information. Should the new city hall include dedicated offices at the current phase of the project? I never remember voting on it. You know, it seems like there's a lot of people out in the community think that's a given already. I remember meeting with the design team at the very onset of this. That was kind of an open-ended question. What do you want to see? I gave them my opinion. You know, there's some people saying, well, we're going to need council offices when we change our form of government. If we can afford to change our form of government, we can, we're going to be able to afford to build another four for council offices. It's going to cost a heck of a lot more money than $1,100 a month per council to fill those positions. And should the new city hall have the level of civic quality included and presented design? I say yes. You know, that's really an insignificant amount of increase in the cost and for what its purpose is for, I think it outweighs the added cost. So, that's my opinion on those four motions. Mike said I think we should put those out there, yes or no vote, and move on.
So, thank you for that, George, and thank you for Betty for really trying to answer these questions. And we have another round where others could step up and answer that. And if you, if motions come out of that, that's fine. I did have a couple of things. I wanted to ask, is the LCC building up to this seismic level? Does anybody know that?
I don't believe so. I can verify that, but I've not heard anything about it being designed to that level, and I probably would have if it had been, because I've taken several tours.
Right, because they were trying to reach the kind of high standards on everything.
On energy, right, yeah.
Yeah. I did want to read this piece. It's in our, in our literature about the aftermath of a disaster where Murni Dot, the city's risk manager, presented information to council in September about earthquake preparedness. One of the key points that she made is that providing community resilience after an earthquake should be a priority for public sector entities in accordance with the Oregon Resilience Plan recommendations. Implementing these recommendations requires not a short-term vision, but a long-term vision and commitment to actively working on strategies that will help the community recover from a disaster. Upgrading the seismic rating of the new city hall would be in line with all of those recommendations. I just wanted to say that that comes from the work that's been done for our whole state, and this is our piece that we're being asked to consider before us now. The other thing is that I guess I would just put out there that these budget and policy decisions you have before you now are, with these budget and policy decisions, we are responsible to our city, but we're also responsible to our state and to our nation in how we are prepared to respond to things and what we're trying to do in terms of all the issues that George just mentioned around both the kind of building and energy we use and in terms of the preparedness for what we see as almost inevitable coming our way. So, I just put that out there for you all to think about as you move through this difficult decision. And I guess I would also say, just so you know, we all hear from lots of people. I can guarantee you whatever's built, some will like it and some won't. Just saying. Okay. I think that's just kind of a given in this. So, we'll, now we'll do its round two, and we'll start with George Brown.
Thanks, Mayor. Well, I want to ask this question one more time of the project manager. When you were first aware that the project was seriously over the schematic design budget?
What I will say again is when I gave the direction for them to redesign the building, I knew at that time that it would be over budget, and so...
When was, when was that direction?
Plus or minus 12 months ago.
Was there any reason the council wasn't informed of that decision?
There was no particular reason.
Okay. All right. Did you ever consider hiring an independent outside auditor to review the cost estimates and compare them with the schematic designs?
We used a double estimating strategy by having an estimator that was part of the design team and an estimator that was our CMGC, who was directly under contract with the owner. So, we felt we had enough checks and balances with those two entities.
Well, it's my understanding that the city hired an outside auditor to examine the seriously escalating cost estimates of the police station remodel. Is that correct?
I'd have to go back and look, but I don't, I was the project manager. I don't recall hiring an outside auditor.
Okay. Do you have any idea how much it would cost to hire an outside auditor to check these?
I don't, I don't have any idea.
Uh-huh. Well, I've been told it's about $5,000, maybe you could probably get a good analysis. And when there's a $7 million, you know, estimated budget overrun, $5,000, you know, that's peanuts. It's possible we should do that. Oh, just briefly about the seismic thing, this, the manager sent us this. This was a investigation, a seismic hazard study done by Foundation Engineering. And they did boring and reviewed all the literature. They say that contrary to what other people have been saying, the conclusion, and the engineer, engineering geologist Brooke Runings said, based on the finding presented herein is our opinion that there are no geologic or seismic hazards that require mitigation or would preclude construction of the new city hall. The threat of ground motion amplification is absolutely negligible. The threat of liquefaction and lateral spread negligible. So, this could be a way to build it to the middle level required of public buildings and that. You could probably save about $1 million there. We can go into that later. All right, so I've got 52 seconds. If everyone looks on their line number 16 on the budget, I left copies and the lines are numbered. Construction contract in the current estimated budget is 38% increase from the budget adding the fourth floor. In other words, it's $4.4 million more. We've been told that construction costs have gone up 11.5% due to inflation of materials. What accounts for the extra 26.5% increase in the construction contract beyond for inflation? It seems like a huge increase.
I think Councillor Pryor stated it well. We were overly optimistic at the beginning and probably set up unreasonable expectations for what we could accomplish. Unfortunately, that often happens despite our best experience. Everybody thinks we're going to do better than we will at the beginning. That's one of the reasons that I've done quite a bit of work on getting some independent cost comps to see how we're doing compared to other city halls to see if we're in the ballpark. And we're at the low end of what other people are doing for actually more, more projects because ours includes a plaza, a parking lot, and some things that Olympia and others don't include. So, I'll take responsibility for that. I was overly optimistic at the beginning when we were all setting the budget, and I think the majority of it is simply rightsizing of the budget, and the rest is inflation.
Okay. When was this current estimated budget developed?
It was completed about a month ago? Not even. Three or four weeks ago.
I see. Well, I'm just curious why council wasn't automatically provided with a copy. One of us had to ask for this information. I have a motion, Mayor. Should I wait till the next round?
You have to wait for the next one. Did you want to answer any, any comment about, what did you, the last comment? You don't have to. I was just...
I think we're okay.
All right. Betty, you're next.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. If, if there was a really big earthquake, well, first I would comment, I think we should pay attention to what George just pointed out, but wouldn't the city hall be underwater anyway?
No. Murni Dot, our risk manager, provided some information that it's extremely unlikely that all the dams would fail simultaneously, that dams, even those designed before the current seismic standards were in place, tend to perform much better than buildings do, that they will sustain some damage. It might, the gates could malfunction, but the catastrophic failure of the flood control system is extremely low probability according to a 2013 report from the Army Corps of Engineers.
I did see that, but I've also seen opinions that every, the dams would break. But anyway, you mentioned grants as part of the funding. I think, I remember hearing that once we had plans for revitalizing and revamping the old city hall, grants would be available because of the historical significance. Why would there be grants available for a new building?
Because we're achieving the baseline for energy efficiency by a substantial margin.
Okay. Another comment about the money. I do agree that the deferred maintenance would have cost a lot if we had been doing it. I think it was a mistake not to do it, but for at least 20 years, and I think longer than that, the old city hall had not had the maintenance it needed, and we would have spent millions of dollars if we had maintained it. I don't know how many, but I'm sure it would have been millions. Thank you.
Okay. Next is Alan.
Yeah, the answer to, my answers to the questions are, LEED gold, yes. Seismic, yes. Seismic, yes. Council offices, I agree with what George Bowling said, no. And civic identity improvements, yes. On lead and energy efficiency improvements, the majority of a building's costs don't actually come from the construction, they actually come from operating the building over time and over its life, the operating cost basically. And lowering these future operating costs and saving the money with ever escalating energy costs make, can be lowered by making an upfront investment like this. So it's not only cost effective, but it's another good business decision to invest in this building in this way, saving the city money in the long run and having a EUI Energy Utilization Index of 30, which is 60% better in a regular building and 50% better in a lead building. And the solar part, actually part of Paul Hobie's bill a couple of years ago that got public buildings to invest in renewables and solar in particular, EWEB did this on their Roosevelt Building when they built it. Historically low, solar is at its lowest cost ever, like around $2 a watt as opposed to about $16 10 years ago. So it's much, much more cost effective than it was just a little while ago. So integrating all this energy efficiency into the design is definitely the smart way to go, and it's the most cost effective way to go. Retrofitting them later doesn't work, is much, much more cost effective if it does, or much more costly if it does. It's a very clever building design, I really like it. Having worked in a passive solar, high-energy efficient building like this one, it's supposed to be, I can tell you that it's a much more pleasant and nicer place to be in, meet in, and work in. And I think our new city hall should be a model of efficiency, and we should walk our talk about sustainability and triple bottom line. And you guys, did you have an estimate of what the EWEB incentives could be for this building in terms of the energy efficiency things they have? I know you're looking at it.
They've been kind of variable with their programs lately, and so I don't have a current estimate, and that's, we just finished the latest energy modeling and are just now at the point where we can really pursue in earnest the incentive opportunities both with EWEB and the Oregon Department of Energy.
Probably hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Particularly from ODO, the EWEB, I'm a little, we have some costs of infrastructure because we have to come over from High Street that might offset some of those, and so I'm a little reluctant to overpromise there because some of those incentives might get eaten up in the infrastructure development, but we're hopeful. But again, I don't want to overpromise and underdeliver on it.
Without lower the cost.
Right.
Substantial cost. On the civic identity and presence improvements, I think the use of cedar is great, I really like that. It's not only from a reuse perspective, using part of the old city hall, but a part of continuity and history, I like that part. Also like the design enhancements that are going along with this. It looks much more unique and more like it's from here in Eugene than it was before, so I really like those improvements. And then on the council offices, I don't feel the need personally to have, add the additional cost to have an office with a door at this point. Cubicles, fine, if we have a separate conference room where we can close the door and have meetings with constituents if we need to do that. If we change the form of government, like George said, there's going to be a lot of transition costs, I think we can hunk it into there. So what would be the savings if we did reduce the no office spaces for council to set cubicles?
We don't have a specific design, but I would say anywhere from 300,000 to 500,000, you know, based on reasonable space expectations for office and the space to support that.
I did have a fundraising idea with corporate sponsors, we could have a video ribbon around the city hall that could say, "This item brought to you by Sweet Life," or something. We could raise money on that.
Claire. Thank you. Just a few more comments, and then I'll answer the four questions. On the seismic standard, I do believe there are good reasons to build to the higher standard, not because I think the council is more important than schoolchildren, as some have suggested, but because people will need a place to gather, to provide assistance to each other and to get assistance, and city hall is an obvious place for people to look to for that kind of thing in the aftermath of a disaster. Our emergency command center will need to focus on their work and won't be wanting hundreds of people gathering there, even if the public knew where that was. I would also say city hall could be used as a media center in the aftermath of a major quake, given that I doubt the buildings that house our local media will remain functional in that event. So I think there's a lot of things that a city hall could do in the aftermath of a major quake, if it was functional, that other places will not be able to accomplish. I have felt, like Counselor Pryor pointed out, that our $15 million budget was a low figure for the building that we as a community would aspire to have as our main civic space. So while I am not thrilled that we have experienced some unexpected cost overruns and are looking at increasing the budget at this retroactively, I think the costs being presented here for things we may or may not decide to do are more realistic for a building with these features. I appreciate the feeling that some counselors have expressed on behalf of some members of the public that this is more than they want us to see us spend on this project. So I hope to hear how we might create a better match between those concerns and the need to have a functional city hall that will serve the public for many decades that we can point to with pride. On the four questions before us, I think, number one, yes, the city hall should be lead gold certified building, it's an investment in our future, it matches the values that we've said we want to uphold in terms of environmental stewardship, and it makes the building, again, one that will last. Same with number two, I've already spoken to the seismic rating. Number three, no, I do not believe that the city council needs dedicated offices, I believe cubicles with at least one, you know, small meeting room with the door that closes would be sufficient. And should the city hall have a level of civic quality included in the presented design? Yes, I also agree, I think it was Counselor Zelenka, I think the design you're bringing forward now really starts to look like a building that belongs in Eugene and couldn't just be plopped down anywhere in the country. So I appreciate the thoughtfulness and the work that's going into creating that design, those design features at this point. Thank you.
Greg, do you want to weigh in on these four questions?
I think we have lost him.
Greg?
Greg, do you want to weigh in on the four questions?
I think he's cut off.
Maybe I'm mute.
Okay. All right, so next up is Chris.
Thank you, specifically to the four questions. Should city hall be lead gold certified? You've all said it, and I completely agree, especially what George said, we need to walk the walk, and our expectations are that we do that. Should the new city hall have a seismic rating of 1.5? I think absolutely. We talk a lot about after the earthquake and resiliency, and there's more to resiliency than just the immediate aftermath during the emergency phase. There's a whole structure in place for that, but the resiliency phase actually lasts for months, if not years. And so you need to have a place where you can continue to provide the administrative, operational, logistical, planning, and finance functions in an emergency. And the city hall would be the perfect place to do that, more so than I think some other places because of its location. And if we had a big earthquake and the building was suddenly, you know, taped off and roped off and nobody could use it for years, the question we'd be saying is, what, you mean, for a million more, you could have had a building that's workable, and now you have to, you know, block it off and you can't use it anymore? It seems like a waste. Should the new city hall include dedicated offices? We had cubicles at the old city hall, we have cubicles here, they work perfectly fine. I'm okay, I think a cubicle is a great way to work. We have an office where we can shut a door, and talk is perfectly adequate if our government should change at some point in the future, we can certainly accommodate at that point. But hey, I'm happy with a cubicle, I think that's entirely appropriate. Should the new city hall have the level of civic quality included in the presented design? Yes, I think so. I think it should. I want to build a building that is going to be a building we can be proud of for the next 100 years, and to scrimp now is just simply to regret later. So, yeah, I think the answer to all four of those questions, well, actually, three of those questions is yes, and number three is no.
Okay. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. My answers are no to two and three, yes to four, and I'm not sure with one because I don't know that I have enough information, and I'll go through those. Number two, if we get a nine earthquake, FEMA's in charge, they're going to take over charge, and we're not going to have any choice with that, and it's going to be for a long time. So I don't understand that part of the discussion. Should the new city hall include dedicated offices? No. I think the other parts are fine with one. If Alan's correct, then I agree with him. I just don't know if he is, and I don't mean that disrespectfully, I just, is it make, if it makes more sense that the high cost of construction is in the capital part of building it, rather than the, excuse me, the high part is, high cost is in the long-term operations and not in the construction of it. It's my understanding that, for example, manufacturing very high-quality glass takes an immense amount of energy and puts out an immense amount of CO2, and it's often done in parts of the world where shipping it here makes it more expensive. So, I mean, and that's just, you know, being very minute about this question, I don't honestly know whether it's more expensive to do that or to do concrete, I don't know. So I'm not sure I can answer that one very well. If the answer is, if you take each of those individual materials and how they're manufactured, and you can show me that it's less expensive to, you know, to do that where we have some of the most inexpensive power generated up at the top of the river in the country, and you can show me that the cost difference, in fact, is that significant, then I'd probably agree with number, with, yes to number one, but I don't have enough information for that. To Claire's point, I agree with her entirely. We should be taking a look at this, and this is the point where, when you're presented with a difficult problem and the way ahead isn't exactly what you'd hope it be, it's incumbent upon the council to be innovative about what other options we might look at. That's why I move that the managers, since we have months before a decision, go to the next EWEB board meeting, not staff, and ask them this question. Would the board please vote at your convenience on your willingness to enter into negotiation with the city for the purchase of their building? So again, that motion is...
Mayor, point of order, please. Is this a motion?
Yes.
He's putting a motion out.
I submitted my motion well in advance, and we never got any advance notice, I'd like to make my motion first. I'm perfectly happy to hear Counselor Clark's, but we're almost out of time.
We've got...
Eight minutes.
Seven minutes.
We can add time.
I'll withdraw because of my friend George's request, and he's right, he did, and I'm doing this off the cuff, but I would really request the manager ask them that, not the staff. We've got time. Ask the board if there are, find out if there are three votes to, just to enter into negotiation with you, just find out.
I would need a motion on that, because I'm...
Well, then I will finish my motion, I apologize, it doesn't seem the mayor's ruled me out of order on this one. I will finish my motion, if I can have a second, I'll explain for a moment, so George still has time.
Your second?
Nope.
Okay.
So we don't even want to know, well, excuse me, I still have a few moments. So let's be clear about that. This council doesn't even want to know if the building's for sale.
Oh, I'll support it, yeah, sure.
Thank you, sir, very much. I am not asking that we act, I am simply asking, in the intervening time, can we get more information? It requires nothing and it stalls nothing.
Okay. All those in favor of that motion, please indicate. Two in opposition, one, two, three, four, five, it goes down.
Is he there?
I don't think he's there.
Okay. George, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, oh, I'm sorry. George Brown, George Bowling has his turn in the queue first.
Real quick, I haven't seen us really getting anywhere close to make a decision on these four questions. George's got a motion coming up. I would suggest that we meet, have a special work session next Wednesday, May 4th, to continue this discussion, because I know the motion that George is going to have is going to take more than three-minute discussion. So I don't know, if he needs to put that on the table, then I move to postpone until a special meeting on May 4th, or how?
Can we see how this works, George? And what I would suggest is, he can put his motion out, if it takes time, then I agree with you.
But we still need to have the discussion on, get a, definitely, put it down on the four questions.
I would like to see if the council is ready to vote on those four pieces, and just do a vote.
Just call for a vote on each one.
Just call for a vote on each of them if we have time.
Let's try and see what happens.
Okay. If it doesn't work, I'll go with you, okay?
All right. Should I work some more?
Okay, all right. George.
Thank you, Mayor. I sent everyone my motion, and I'll speak to it if I get a second. I move to temporarily, and I mean very temporarily, suspend work on the current city hall project and tell council to have at least one more work session to thoroughly review the financial status of the project.
Your second?
Second.
Moved in seconded.
Thank you. The reason we need another work session is because 16 days ago, we were informed, that is when we learned of the serious exploding cost estimates of the budget. We had very little time to analyze that. Only today did we receive even this fairly abbreviated line item, explanation of the new budget. I have several more line item questions, but there's no time to ask. I'm sure maybe some of the other counselors are interested in how the finances are working and maybe not, but I just can't believe that we would plow right ahead without a thorough examination of the budget. And I have many more questions that don't even relate to this page. So, you know, and, you know, the manager has admitted that he made independently decisions a year ago that significantly raised the estimates, so, and that was totally independent of council direction, we weren't even, we didn't even know about it till today, when he mentioned it. So I think that's very problematic. So, I mean, you know, we just have to keep reminding ourselves, it's like, we have a fiduciary responsibility to our constituents, to the citizens of this town, and it on another work session would be, could be very eliminating and very helpful, so we can end up making a good decision. And I guess I think that's all I have to say, first round, anyway.
Okay, we'll vote on that motion. All those in...
I have a question.
Yes?
Don't we already have a scheduled other work session?
On this topic? City Hall, no.
No.
Okay.
So all those in favor of the motion, please indicate. Three, and all those in opposition. One, two, three, four, it goes down. So now we're going to see if we can go through this, so I'm going to have Alan put these questions out.
All right. The first question is, should, so this is a straw poll?
This is answering those questions, is it?
Shouldn't it be a motion?
Mm-hmm.
I move that the new city hall should be a lead gold certified building. Betty?
I'll second.
Moved in seconded. All those in, yes?
I want to speak to it.
Thank you, Mayor. Can anyone do their best to answer the questions I just had? Because I now have to vote, and I don't have sufficient information for an answer.
Concrete versus steel?
No. Versus glass? And versus some of the other materials that we've decided that go into this building. There's been a, there's been a statement made that it will cost less money to use high-quality materials and to design them in this fashion than it will to operate the building over the course of time if we were to use different materials. My set, I'm saying that we seem to be making a decision on that basis, rather than on your statement of whether or not that is accurate.
I can attempt to start to answer that, Counselor. One of your questions was the initial capital versus the operations and maintenance, and I think Counselor Zelenka brought this up as well. In general, when we look at total cost of ownership of projects...
Forgive me for interrupting you, we have to vote on this one, so I'm asking specifically in this one, will that be true? Excuse me?
Yes.
Ethan Nelson apparently has some questions.
Okay. Okay.
I'm going to put a pause on this for, however I have to do that, interrupt this discussion so we can extend the time, so...
Yeah, move to extend 15 minutes.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, one, two, three, four, five, six, in opposition, one...
I, I'm back with you, Mayor.
Hey.
And you support it, you support it, Greg?
Yes.
So that's seven in favor extending the time, and one in opposition, we're extending the time for 10 minutes, right?
Fifteen.
Okay, let's go.
Ethan Nelson, Intergovernmental Relations Manager, formerly the Green Building Manager for City of Eugene, and to the question that Counselor Clark had put forth in regards to embodied energy emissions for building versus then the life, Department of Environmental Quality, Oregon DQ, conducted a study that looked at lifecycle emissions regarding all of the... all of the constructibility, different types of materials, and then the, then the life cycle, and they utilized around a 50-year lifecycle, rather than even what we're looking at as a longer one. And what they showed was that, over the course of time, the emissions produced from the delivery of energy, and this was in the Northwest, so BPA slice and the types of power production we have that come to EWEB, were by far greater than the embodied emissions from construction. And so Counselor Zelenka is, when he says that energy use over time...
In this?
Excuse me?
In this building?
In, it's, it's, you would have to run a fairly complicated and somewhat costly emissions evaluation, which could be done, but from templates, they've been done.
It seems like we're being asked to make the decision on that basis, and we, I don't have an official answer about whether or not that's true. If it is true, I'm happy to vote for it. I just need to hear somebody tell me, who is officially in charge of program, that in fact, building it this way will be much less expensive to operate and will save money over the course of the life of the building. The specific building.
Yes, with our aggressive EUI target of 30, it will definitely pay for itself with this building to build it in this way.
Thank you very much.
It will save the money over the life.
That's all I need.
Operating, maintaining the building.
We would expect your annual energy cost to be 60% lower than a typical building on an annual basis, and then when you overlay the likely increase in the cost of some of those resources, that only gets to be a better story long term.
Thank you very much.
And I guess I just want to clarify that when, as much as I admire and respect and think all of you are brilliant, any comment made by council is not the same as asking a question from, overall. Okay. So we're ready to, George, you want to make a comment on this before we vote on it?
I'm going to vote no on this, and probably most of the other ones, because we just don't have enough financial information. I think it's irresponsible to approve all this stuff. I'm for council offices, but I'm going to vote against that too, because we don't have a full budget picture, we don't have a full financial picture, and it's crazy to push ahead with this, so, no.
Yeah, just to clarify, what I was saying was that the, the majority of the costs associated with the building are in its operation as opposed to its construction. That's also true for its emissions, greenhouse gas emissions, so lowering the operating cost is a good idea, is a cost-effective thing to do in this case. But also, our issues are not really that much about capital costs as they are about ongoing operating costs. So if we can lower ongoing operating costs for the next 50 years, that puts the city in a better financial place, and that's why these kind of investments are smart. So voting in favor of sustainability and voting in favor of energy efficiency is a smart thing to do. I'm sorry, George, if you don't have enough information about that, but this is really common practice, actually, to make these kind of investments.
So just to remind us that what we're voting on right now is should the new City Hall be a lead gold certified building? All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six. Greg?
Aye, yes.
Seven in favor, in opposition, one, that, so that answers yes. The next one?
I move that the new City Hall have a seismic rating of 1.5.
Second.
Moved in seconded. George?
I think that's clarified in the engineer's report that that's not necessary. Now, I was, I'm voting no on that one, I'll vote no, also because, you know, incomplete financial information.
Mike?
I just need to point out that Counselor Brown is misinterpreting the site-specific geotechnical survey. It's specifically addressing the characteristics of that site. We know from multiple studies, geologic record, et cetera, that the subduction zone earthquake is, is coming, and all ground everywhere will experience the shaking of the subduction zone earthquake, and we're subject to minor, just regular fault earthquakes in between that time. What the geotechnical survey is talking about is that this site doesn't have any special seismic considerations that make it more prone than, than any other site, not that it, because it's a good site, the earthquake won't result in damage to, and ground shaking to this building.
And?
The geologists that wrote the report reviewed all of the current literature up to last year and took that into consideration, just in response, thank you.
I think we're ready to vote on this. All those in favor, should the new City Hall have a seismic rating of 1.5? Please indicate. One, two, three in favor of that. Greg?
No.
Okay. So in opposition is one, two, three, four, five, so that one gets a no. Should the new City Hall include dedicated offices in the current phase of the project? Is the next motion?
I move that the new City Hall include dedicated offices in the current phase of the project. Second.
Moved in seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. Two, Greg?
No.
Okay, two in opposition? One, two, three, four, five, six, so that one does not pass.
The next motion is, the new City Hall should have the level of civic quality included in the present design, presented design.
Oh. Second.
And seconded?
I have a question.
Yes, Greg.
I don't really know what that means.
It's, it's basically that you're accepting the, the design as, as is with, with the features that have been designed into it, the reuse of the cedar, the, just the general shape and, and design of, of the building.
That we're assuming that that does have that civic quality.
Correct.
Yes. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five in opposition? One, two, and Greg?
I wrote yes.
So that's, tell me again how many that was?
Six.
Six to two. Okay, and it passes. Right. Okay, so that gives the, yes?
I just wanted to clarify, in case any of you are confused, so what you just did was give direction to the design team that was not authorization to proceed, that the design team will finish the work, they'll get the bids back. At that point, you'll have an actual number, and you will have to vote on whether to approve at that point. So this wasn't your final vote on this.
Right. Thank you for that. So the other question is, so, does this mean to vote on the seismic, does that mean we go back to the former seismic?
What this means is that we won't design it to 1.5, so we'll take out what we can, that reduces that from 1.5, and then, I'm not sure all what that means, something has to do with generators, something has to do with how you secure fire sprinklers, all that kind of stuff.
And for all of us to be sure we know what we've landed on, the direction we're giving, I think, is to go back to where we were before instead of adding an additional level, is that correct?
The building will be designed for 1.25.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Okay. Which is the minimum code requirement.
All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
All right. Thank you.